When are you going to fix that light in your garage?
One of these days.
I brought the fire over there the other day when I went over and fixed that on there. It's been blinking for about a week.
Turn off sometimes.
Burn itself.
Have you noticed that?
I have to now.
Yeah.
I counted on the end. The couch is in there. They could reach the floor.
Is that where it is?
I'd like to grab an additional sheet of paper tonight.
I'm glad you're here.
I'll use that.
Hi.
Do I like that?
Yeah.
Drop down.
Still, we're in.
We did.
They just made a temporary choice.
They had to get a talk to.
Hi, Mark.
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming out.
I think maybe we should.
Hello.
Thank you.
Good weekend.
This is the leave this room to be.
Yeah.
You've done his job.
So.
Yeah.
There's.
Good weekend.
This is the leave this room to be.
Yeah.
I don't pay attention.
I was sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Platt City Council meeting Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 5:30 PM here in the City Council chambers. I'm calling the meeting to order. We have an invocation by Pastor Daniel Ramsey from our Redeemer Lutheran Church. Pastor Daniel?
Let us pray. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God heavenly Father, as we gather together tonight to manage the needs and demands of our city, we are also mindful of what is taking place elsewhere in our land, from recovery from the fires that devastated parts of Maui to the aftermath of the hurricane in Florida and Georgia, from what appears to be rampant lawlessness that we witnessed in various places to the needs of the homeless and the immigrant issues many communities are being forced to address. May it give us a perspective on the matters that have to be dealt with here and perhaps humble us as we look to you to guide and direct our words and actions. Lord, we are truly grateful for the blessings you have bestowed on our land. Guide us in our resources to the best of our ability that needs may be met and citizens may flourish. Grant our commissioners wisdom that they may discern the best courses of action in all that they do. Give them your peace that they may address one another and the petitioners here present in gentleness of spirit and fulfill the true purposes of government, namely safeguarding peace and prosperity so that we may live good and upright lives in your sight and have opportunities to tell of you and your great love for us through our words and actions. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Ramsey.
For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie Rollcall, please.
Nisley?
Here.
Tryon?
Here.
Volz?
Here.
Lucas?
Here.
Garrick?
Here.
Woods?
Here.
Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure: The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Consent agenda: All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one: Approve the minutes of August 15 and 17, 2023. Number two: Place on file the treasurer's report for July 2023. Number three: Approve the application by La Casa Del Rio LLC for a special designated license on September 8th and 9th, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the American Legion 2020 East Fourth Street for a class reunion. Number four: Approve the application by Fraternal Order Vehicles #2839 for a special designated license on October 7th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM at the DNN Event Center, 501 East Walker Road for the Pheasants Forever fundraiser. Number five: Authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreement with Bill Summers Ford in the amount of $91,286.68 for two new service department trucks for the water department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Calling the question on the consent agenda, please. Consent agenda is passed. Pausing just for a second, those of you that are standing near the doorway or in the hall, if you'd like to sit down, the conference room down the hall there is open and has the Zoom running on, so you can see this meeting if you'd like. Otherwise, you're welcome to keep standing if you'd like. Okay, continuing on. Excuse me. Adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on a property owned by the City of North Platt during the Creative Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center fundraiser on September 7, 2023.
I move to adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platt during the Creative Unlimited Arts Council Prairie Arts Center fundraiser on September 7, 2023.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Flanders. Do we have any discussion on item number six?
I would just like to thank you. I'd like to know, how does the liability insurance work when it's on city property? Is that the city's liability insurance if something were to happen?
On city property, this is a street, correct?
Parking lot.
Parking lot, right.
Is that considered city property?
So it's just as any other piece of city property?
They would go after all pockets, so the Arts Council would be liable, city would be liable, more than likely. They would go through the deepest pockets.
I would say it likely depends on what type of claim it would be too. So, I mean, there'd be a lot of questions, but if it's city property, like Councilman Volz said, most likely someone's going to make a claim against the city. But that would also be governed by state law that governs claims against the city, that type of thing too. So it's not just an insurance liability issue, it's also a matter of state law on how claims would be submitted against the city.
I guess I wouldn't want the city to be necessarily putting themselves out there. Not that anybody, anything would happen.
And the other question, Mr. Nisley?
Mayor, I just wondered, and I just asked Bill, I mean, has the city, as a matter of practice, had to hold harmless agreements when we do this with? I'm just asking the question.
I guess I'm not aware of anything that governs the use of, I think the city holds the parking lot out as open for public parking, and so I'm not aware of any hold harmless provisions in any agreements governing the use of that, but we can look into it.
Other questions or comments? Calling the question on number six, please. Number six is passed. Number seven: Approve the application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center for the special designated license on September 7th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the city-owned parking lot west of the Prairie Arts Center, 416 North Jeffers Street for a fundraiser.
I move to approve the application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on September 7th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the city-owned parking lot west of the Prairie Arts Center, 416 North Jeffers Street for a fundraiser.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Lucas. Any discussion on number seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rieker?
In light of our discussion on the last issue, I wonder if we wouldn't be smart to request a copy of the insurance of the people that are asking for this provision in the future so that we know that we are covered from a certain liability standpoint? I would imagine that the Prairie Arts Center has to have some type of liability insurance, I would presume, and I think it might be incumbent upon us to make sure that in a venue like this that we're actually covered under their insurance.
We can certainly request the document, yes.
Certainly on future requests. I'm not going to hold this up tonight, but I would think in the future we probably should ask for that.
Okay.
What about the ones on the city street, like for the music on the bricks?
Excuse me, I didn't hear the question.
Like the music on the bricks, do you want that for, like, when they do those downtown events also? I don't know. I'm just asking. So I can notify.
Why don't we have our attorney do a little bit of research on this issue?
Just going to give it to the attorney.
And then we'll come back at the next meeting. If the council chooses to approve this, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
But let's have a little more information at our next meeting about that. Go ahead, Tyler.
You know, we've heard a lot of feedback over the years of having more to do and more outside entertainment things, and so I'm all for these types of events. So if we do think it's prudent to ask for insurance, which certainly doesn't bother me, let's just try to keep the process as efficient as we can so we don't discourage these kinds of activities. I know I had asked Chief Reeves at a prior meeting if the law enforcement had any trouble with these types of events, and I'm assuming that we're still okay with this type of stuff from their end. And so I'm all for doing the prudent things, but let's keep it easy for our applicants to, my suggestion.
Other questions or comments on number seven? Okay, calling the question on number seven, please. Number seven is passed. Number eight: Adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platt during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center Husker Football Tailgate on September 23, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platt during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council Prairie Arts Center Husker Football Tailgate on September 23, 2023.
Second. Motion by Flanders, second by Garrick. Any discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, calling the question on item number eight, please. Item number eight is passed. I'm sensing a theme with the first four items tonight. Approve the application by, number nine: Approve the application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on September 23, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM in the city-owned parking lot west of the Prairie Arts Center, 416 North Jeffers Street for a Husker Football Tailgate.
I move to approve the application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council DBA Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on September 23, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM in the city-owned parking lot west of the Prairie Arts Center, 416 North Jeffers Street for a Husker Football Tailgate.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Volz. Any discussion on item number nine? Seeing none, calling the question on item number nine, please. Item number nine is passed. Item number 10 and item number 11 are pulled from the agenda tonight. We'll consider them in two weeks. We have a little bit of text to modify in order to create some specif, excuse me, specificity in regard to the documents research portion of that ordinance, so it'll be back in two Moving on to item number 12. Revoke the conditional use permit approved on September 3, 2019, due to noncompliance of approved permit application provisions on property located at 2,000 West Eugene Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move to revoke the conditional use permit approved on September 3, 2019, due to noncompliance of approved permit application provisions on property located at 2,000 West Eugene Avenue.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Garrick. Judy? I knew she wasn't too far. You want to give us a little background here, please?
Judy Clark, planning administrator, council mayor. Yeah, this was a conditional use as in the agenda item that was issued in 2019. We've had a number of complaints from neighboring property owners that the property is kind of left in disrepair most times, and he really hasn't started anything on his proposed project for a number of years. Here it is, 2023. He did get a permit to construct a fence, which I believe is partially constructed, but other than that, the site currently is being used to basically store material, and it's unsightly, and so that's kind of where we're at.
So would it be fair to say that what was in the original proposal has not been completed?
Correct. It has barely been started. The only thing that has begun is the construction of a fence. That is it.
Thank you. Before you walk away, any discussion, Mr. Rieker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judy, so if we go ahead and revoke this conditional use permit, and then what happens?
So he is outside city limits, so as you know, code compliance only goes to city limits, but they are in the two-mile jurisdiction. So that puts us in a zoning code compliance issue, and so through zoning, that property is currently zoned ag, agricultural, and on agricultural property, you are not allowed to store commercial products. So we wouldn't be allowed to store, you know, piles of rock that he would use in a commercial business, that sort of thing. So what we can do at that point is then send letters, you know, letting him know that he's in violation of the current zoning code. If he comes back in a year or two years and wants to do the project or similar project, he can reapply for a conditional use permit. So it doesn't completely, you know, stop him forever if he wants to do it or change zoning or something like that. Things are possible.
But in the interim, he would have to comply with the zoning as?
As an ag property, yes. That is correct.
Oh, sorry, Donna, go ahead.
That's okay.
Sorry, I was making notes.
That's okay, thank you. So was he notified of this action tonight?
He was sent a letter. I did try to call. I didn't get a response from the phone call, and he was sent a couple of letters. One of the letters is attached to your documentation that was sent back in '21, listing exactly what he needed to comply with, and those dates, he negotiated those dates with us at the time of that meeting, and he hasn't met any of those dates.
So there's been no conversation?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Judy, so to clarify, the conditional use permit he was given was for a wholesale nursery and greenhouse with accessory retail outlets, is that what the conditional use was?
That is correct.
Okay. So basically, that's an allowed conditional use within that zoning. He applied for the permit. I mean, I remember the discussion and his plan and all that.
Yes, yes.
So he came and presented his plan, we gave him that conditional use, and the issue is it just hasn't been followed through with, right?
The issue is it hasn't been followed through with, but most of the issue is the fact that it's just kind of a mess out there.
So it's getting used more as a commercial or industrial storage-type facility versus what we agreed to was, hey, because I remember them talking about having storage piles and that, that they were going to be in assembly with kind of a wholesale retail-type operation.
Right. He had a great plan. I mean, if you remember, his plan was really great, and it was going to look super nice out there, but it just hasn't happened.
And so if we try to boil down the issue, it's that what's happening on the lot today isn't compliant with the permit or the zoning, underlying zoning, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on number 12? Do we have any discussion? Mr. Lucas?
Just to clarify, so a yes vote is in favor of revoking, is that correct?
That is correct. Other questions or comments? Mr. Rieker?
I can think of one other conditional use permit we acted on a couple of years ago where a gentleman was going to build a duplex just north of Rodeo Road. I can't remember which street it was now, but there's a trailer house there, and I think he's in the lawn care business and snow removal business, and that has never been acted on. Is it routine for us to revoke these conditional use permits, or is it an occasional item?
It's an occasional item. I don't think, at least not in my time here, which of course isn't very long that we've ever, we've had to do that. This one, typically what happens when someone isn't maybe making a lot of progress on what they've agreed to do is Judy reaches out to them or the planning department reaches out to them and says, hey, what's your status, what are you doing? And they'll either opt to do nothing, and then the permit is just, goes away, which doesn't happen very often, or a lot of times they actually sell the piece of property and it goes to a different use.
So is there a time limit on these conditional use permits? Is it, if the conditional use permit is not exercised, does it just kind of fade into the darkness, or what happens to it?
Mayor, council, there is a stipulation on there that they do need to get something started within a year. The conditional use permits are good for two years. If they don't get something started within that two-year timeframe, then basically that is null and void. So we have actually got to the point where this is null and void, but I just felt that we needed to take actual action, that we have proof that, yes, this is null and void, you're over the two-year timeframe, so it's no longer good. Conditional uses go with the property, so had he built that, that conditional use would stand and be there forever. But if they don't get it started and don't get their project completed, then that conditional use can go away within two years.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Donna, go ahead.
Thank you. So who brings these situations to the attention of the city? I mean, does anyone monitor these?
We try to monitor them as best as we can. Most of the time, as with any other complaint, it's based off of a neighbor saying, look, he's not doing what he's supposed to do. That's usually how, you know, it comes to our mind again. But yeah, we tend to watch conditional uses when they build, when they come in and get their building permit. We need to make sure that what they're proposing in their building permit cycle is the same as a conditional use permit. So yeah, I try my best to monitor them as I can, but a lot of it does come from neighborhood complaints.
Thank you.
And just so I can add something, we always try to help them push this along, and that was kind of evident in that letter that you guys received. We held a meeting, we tried to say, okay, you know, you can't meet the regular timeline, what is your timeline? So we do try to do our best to help them along. Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on number 12? Seeing none. Did you want to say something, Donna? Okay. I heard you inhale, so that's usually, all right. Calling the question on number 12, please. Okay. Now we have a public hearing. We actually have two public hearings in a row. I guess that's why many of the people are sitting in the audience. This is regarding, first, adopting the recommendations by the North Platt Planning Commission for an amendment to the North Platt Comprehensive Plan 2011 Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from the public slash quasi-public to commercial on property located at 2118, 2208, and 2210 and 2212 Hannah Avenue, as indicated on the attached map. And then number 14 would be to adopt ordinance number 4142 to rezone certain land from an R2 dwelling district to a PB1 planned neighborhood commercial services district located at 2118, 2208, 2210, and 2212 Hannah Avenue. The nature of these two items is such that if number 13 is not passed, number 14 could not be passed. So for the sake of efficiency tonight, folks, we're going to do these public hearings all at the same time because there's no sense in doing two different public hearings, one of which may become moot at some point. Due to that end, we will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone and tell us who you are, where you live, and offer your comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. I will be timing you, and you get close to five minutes, and I will politely ask you to stop. Okay, go for it.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Scott Melinda Standage, 801 Oto Trail. We are the people that have bought the property, and my wife is going to give you a little statement that we wrote, and we'll all answer questions after that.
And we'd just like to review a little bit about what we'd like to do and what our vision is. There's a need in our community for a centrally located, attractive venue for family gatherings such as weddings, anniversary dinners, family reunions, school and social groups. 2200 Hannah Avenue, formerly known as the St. Paul Lutheran Church, hosted exactly these kinds of events for 70 years. Sadly, this beautiful church no longer had a congregation that could support it and had to close. It is a shame for this beautiful church building to sit unused, vacant, or even be demolished. Scott and I would like to repurpose the church and give it a new life that will benefit the area and all the residents of North Platt. We are proposing to repurpose 2200 Hannah Avenue into an event center for the community of North Platt and surrounding area, holding the same kind of events that it has hosted for the last 70 years. This business would function with the name Old Church Hall. We have provided you with a business plan that also includes property details, parking, and its location to Westfield Shopping Center. Old Church Hall is a 118-person-capacity, single-story brick building with 60 off-street parking spaces on five lots. Hours of operation for Old Church Hall would be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. This would include setup and cleanup of events. Events will be overseen by an event coordinator who will require a walkthrough of the property before and after each event. In addition to an event onset coordinator, the location is monitored 24 hours by video and audio security. Old Church Hall does not provide or serve alcohol. All patrons will agree by signed contract to conduct their functions in an orderly and lawful manner and in full compliance with all applicable laws, regulations of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, and the state of Nebraska. In allowing 2200 Hannah Avenue to become an event venue, we are putting the building back on the tax base. We are not requesting TIF, and we are not requesting any other public grants. Old Church Hall is approximately 400 feet from Westfield Shopping Center. Having Westfield Shopping Center located within walking distance is also going to support that local community and businesses. Items such as flowers, salon services, gifts, and catering will be able to be. catering will be able to be, support those businesses in that area and the whole city. Old Church Hall is, in addition to supporting these businesses, we anticipate on creating three to five jobs for local residents of North Platt. This is a wonderful repurpose of this beautiful church building that provides a much-needed banquet location for the citizens of North Platt. Currently, people are waiting a year, two years out to have to reserve buildings for graduations and so on. We hope to help that situation. This is a small, family-owned business, providing a location for family-oriented events and a property that will be well-cared-for and renewed.
So what we're asking is for you to give us the opportunity to make this a business. That's all we're really asking from the council is that. And if you have any questions, I'd be willing to either answer them or talk them through.
Why don't you guys go ahead and sit down and we reserve the right to call you back up.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Mayor and North Platt City Council, what I'm going to say-
Sir?
Yes.
Who are you and where do you live?
Sorry. Gary Waggoner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R, 3902 Sugarberry Court. And I've been at that address for over 20 years. What I'm first going to say is that I'm not really going to be speaking to the council and the mayor because you all know Scott. I'm going to be really kind of talking to the people that don't. I've known Scott for about 35 years. We originally, when he came to town, we played softball together. When Scott then was promoted to his current position for the city, I was a owner-manager of Western Nebraska Claim Service, which is an independent insurance adjusting firm. And we did all the claims for Employers Mutual a long time ago and then after the city changed their insurance to alarm, we then again did their claim. So when I worked with Scott on several fairly large claims, or a couple of very large claims, I don't know if you folks remember one, we had that windstorm that caused all the tree damage in the cemetery and all that. That was one of them. I guess what I have to say about Scott is he's a stand-up guy. And I don't use that term loosely. I don't use it very often. Scott also is a very handy guy. He can, you know, he's an electrician, obviously. He also is, construction-wise, he's very savvy. So, you know, I realize that I don't live in an area where I could hear anything from that area, because I'm probably a little more than a mile away. But I got to thinking, well, I didn't know about this until I read it in The Telegraph, and I got to thinking about it, what would I say about it if it was going to be built in my neighborhood, your neighborhood? And I thought, you know, if we had a church there that it had no use anymore as a church, I wouldn't want it to be vacant. That would be about the last thing I'd want. And I would, you know, venture to say, if everyone fights every time anybody has a repurpose for this, you know, what's the next thing going to be coming down the line? You know, the things that they've named off, they all, it's all laughter, laughter for birthdays, for anniversaries. I just can't see where it's going to be that noisy. And I think noise is the biggest concern. I don't think parking is a concern. As far as City Council, I'd just like to, you know, let you folks know that, you know, we've been asked as citizens of North Platt to take a huge leap of faith on a big business coming to town. And that's okay. But I think we ought to be willing to take a small hop of faith for a stand-up guy.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Councilman, Mayor, my name is Kenneth Kemp. I live at 2021 Hannah Avenue. I've lived there for over 20 years. And I have no problem if it was in a commercial neighborhood. And the way it's zoned right now, we're not collecting any money off of it as a church, but there's other ways to make it more liable for North Platt because we are short of housing now. And I'm really against it because we'll just say, they're not making any money on it. They can't make no money on it. So when the next guy comes in, he can do whatever he wants to. And the other part of that is, and I'm just going to make one more comment, I'm going to ask each and every one of you, would you like to have something like that, five houses from your place? Please think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Randy Pugsley, 2117 Hannah Avenue. I live right across the street from the church. My neighbors and I have lived there, I've lived there about seven years now. The church hasn't really ever bothered. They come in there on the weekends or weekdays or, you know, for church services. When they did have, they didn't have very big church services. I feel that this is a residential area and we don't need that kind of commercial area in there. We've got commercial businesses down the street and I'd like to just keep it as a residential area. If you change it to residential or commercial businesses, then the next person can change it. It could happen in your own neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like, there we go.
Excuse me, Councilman, Mayor, my name is Eric Meacham. I live at 2113 Hannah Avenue. We, me and my wife, we just moved. That neighborhood's very nice. I'd like to say, big concern, you know, would be parking, you know. It can hold more cars that are in my neighborhood, you know, and if I was going to a function, you know, and I might get my car dinged up, I might park on the street, you know. People think that way a little bit. I don't think it's a question of his character for wanting to do something, you know. That doesn't bother me, you know. I'd just like you to consider, you know, what happens after it's changed, you know. He might say it's going to be a hall and then say it doesn't do well. He bulldozes it down. It's still zoned for something. He could put something else in there or he can sell it. And who knows what they could put in there, you know. What's the future of that spot going to look like? I just don't feel that the venue fits in the neighborhood. And that, you know, that parking and the future of that spot, you know, for the neighborhood's sake, that's what I'd like you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. See a gentleman getting up in the back there, as well as his wife. He's holding her hand, so hopefully it's his wife.
We've done that for 70 years. My name is Buster Haynes. This is my wife, Lorraine. We live at 2007 Hannah Avenue. We've lived there for 60 years. And the problem we see there is a growing problem. It's the tremendous amount of traffic on Hannah because of all the building west of us. And of course, we have one church right across the street from us. The church is on A Street, but the parking lot is on Hannah, so we've already got all that traffic. And when you have Westfield right at the end of Hannah there, it's nearly constant. And they speed, you know, a lot of speeding on Hannah, and it's unsafe, very un- I'm surprised that someone hasn't got killed, a child on a bicycle or whatever. But I just think it's too unsafe to put something else in there that's going to bring in a lot more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Council, Mayor, I should have came up here with my husband, too. We share a lot of the same viewpoints on the situation. I view it the same way. I think this is a-
Sorry, I apologize for interrupting you. Tell us who you are and I know you're married to that guy sitting behind you, but where do you live?
This guy's wife, I'm Ruth Meacham.
Thank you.
I live at 2113 Hannah. We've been there a year now. Like I said, this is going to be, this is a residential neighborhood and we just don't feel like there's a need to put a business right in the middle of the residential neighborhood. Our major issue is the parking. It says that there could hold 80 vehicles in the parking lot. Like my husband said, our view of it, if I saw that, I didn't want to park my nice car and with all those vehicles, I'd park in front of somebody's house. I have nothing, you know, nothing against the people petitioning for this. I'm sure they're wonderful people. I don't know them personally. However, I mean, I've spent almost 10 years in law enforcement. I guess my faith isn't against them, but I don't have much faith in people in large gatherings, I guess. I mean, they could, you know, sign a petition that they will behave up until a certain point and leave, but I just don't see how they're going to be able to control that to a certain extent. You could charge them $200 for being past 11, but I just don't see them being able to uphold people's behavior past a certain point. Those are just some of my major complaints, I guess, of the issue. When we lived in, when we lived in Grant, we lived a block away from the fairgrounds. And I don't know if anyone knows Grant, Nebraska. It's a very small town. The fairgrounds there is probably about the size of the church. You know, they held wedding receptions there as well. And from where we lived, a block and a half away, we could hear the music and the people having fun from where we were at. So for people who live, you know, a fence away from the church or directly across the street from the church, you know, we're going to be hearing that music up till 11 o'clock at night, not counting people leaving. I don't know many people who would like to listen to their neighbors on the weekend, every weekend, staying up until 11, playing music. So just, just something for you guys to think about. You know, if you lived directly across the street from somewhere holding, you know, a reception, you know, think about some of the receptions you've been to, you know, and, you know, just something to think about. So I don't have anything else, but-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Jesse Martinez. I live at 2308 Hannah Avenue. And this gentleman was right. When we go to back up out of the yard, the people are going down Buffalo, they don't go to Buffalo, they turn on Hannah to get stopped over on A. They're not going to the store, but they're trying to beat the traffic. So when they come in there, they turn fast, they're on to go, you know. I'd be backing up, next thing I know, that guy, he's right behind me. I go, where'd he come from, you know? So we can't have this kind of stuff like that, you know. But now you're going to put another business in there, we'll get twice as many traffic, much more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Wes Meyer. I live at 2016 Hannah. And we've lived there for about 50 years. And I've watched Westfield grow from a little bitty store and dry cleaners and a liquor store to what it is today. And like they say, the traffic that's generated going up Hannah from Buffalo to beat the A Street traffic and to get into the shopping center is bad. And if you allow a venue hall in that area where the St. Paul Lutheran Church is, you're just going to increase the traffic and create more problems in there for us. And they said that they're not going to get a liquor license. But you've been to weddings, you've been to birthday parties, you've been to all of those things, and what happens? They bring in alcohol. And they may get an alcohol permit. So then we've got all those people that are boozed up and trying to leave there. And you're not talking about just 11 o'clock at night, you're talking about from 8 o'clock in the morning till 11 o'clock at night. So they can do whatever they want all day long in my neighborhood, which is a nice, quiet neighborhood. And we just don't want it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Vaughn Farrenbrook. I live on 2307 West D. I also lead The Rock Church which is on 2001 West A. Our parking lot is on Hannah. I guess before I begin, I'm pro-development, pro-progress. I agree with their statement. We do need more meeting places. We need venues. Even my own church, we have a beautiful reception area upstairs and it's even booked out a year or so in advance. My own church hosts events like these, receptions, weddings, birthdays, retirement parties, and so on. And so we do need more of these type of places. In my own church, we host parties, do those sort of things. We're also a parking problem for our community. We're parking along the streets, parking in Garry's. And so a lot of my neighbors here, with a lot of their grace, they've allowed us to take some of their parking space. And I met the gentleman. I had a conversation with him, a stand-up guy, wonderful, wonderful fella. So nothing against the couple or anything like that. But I do have two worries for you guys to consider. One that was already mentioned is parking. Due to the proposed venue, I believe it has minimal parking. And I worry that any additional or overflow parking that is needed will be on the streets, but also in my own church parking lot. I can tell you right now, any time for Nebraska Land Days or those sorts of things, our church parking lot is the natural overflow for the Westfield area. So we do run into problems with that. In fact, our church calendar is structured around community events because we want to be a blessing for our community, but also we don't want to run into the issue of having to track down vehicle owners, asking them to move and going through that headache and such. During harvest time, which is in a few weeks, we have semis and their trailers parking along our street and even in my own parking lot, just to save them travel time. And so parking is and could be an issue. Just put in retrospect, my own church parking lot is 49 stalls. That's how much parking we have in my church parking lot. And I believe we have the largest parking lot there other than the whole entire Westfield area. Reception parking on same-day church events, that's probably going to be my biggest worry. We are in outreach to the community and I would, I wouldn't hate to have to go and interrupt a reception down there, ask people to move any overflow parking. That would naturally happen on our parking lot. My second worry would be reception litter and tailgating. As a pastor, one of my great privileges is to do weddings. I love doing them. I've done my fair share of ones that have liquor permits and the whole nine yards to it. And I've also done my fair share of those that are not supposed to have any liquor whatsoever. I can tell you, there's always liquor, no matter what. It's always there. And if there's no liquor license, rather than the building, it's usually at someone's car or truck in the parking lot. And so I would imagine if they weren't able to have anything on there, they might go to the overflow where their car is at, where their liquor might be held. And we might have to go ahead and worry about the litter from the reception for the next day on Sunday where our church folks would have to pick it all up. And so, like I said, I love the idea, but I do believe those are some of the two main worries that we would have for our area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilpeople. Julie Kinnaman, 2220 Hannah Avenue. I feel like I'm in a very odd situation. I've met Mr. and Mrs. Standage, and I had the pleasure of having them show me their rental house that they're going to have right next to my property. And they took me over to the church and it's beautiful. And I hate seeing it sit empty. And when they first talked to me about their idea, I thought, that sounds pretty neat. But then I went home and I thought a- But then I went home and I thought a little more. And I thought about the little kids that live across the street from me. I don't want to see one of them rent over. I'm a retired school teacher. I love those little kids. I don't want to see anybody hurt. I also don't want the garbage blowing down the alley. I don't want the traffic in the alley. Our alley's in pretty good shape right now. People will cut through that alley as much as they can. And then I worry, we are humans here. And when you go to a party, there's alcohol. And we better stop sticking our heads in the sand. There's also drugs. And that's been a major problem. I don't want this area to become unsafe. This is a residential area. I just purchased my house there in March. I love that neighborhood. I can go out and sit and it's quiet. Yes, we do have cars that come speeding by there, that's for sure. But in my backyard, I can sit where it's quiet. I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning now to work part-time. I really don't want traffic going by that alley or in front with the honking and yelling that comes after a party. We've been there, we've done it ourself. So I have to say that I am against this. And I feel bad about saying this because I think both Mr. and Mrs. Standage are wonderful people. And I question, why wasn't this addressed more when they went to buy this? Did their realtor or whoever was with them not point out some of these things that would be obstacles? I could see that place becoming a wonderful rental for our traveling nurses. There's many different ways that it could be developed that won't encompass all that traffic and the drinking and the drugging that would come with it. So I would like you to consider that. I also want you to think, you're setting a precedent here if you vote for this. Because what is to prevent somebody else from anywhere in town buying a house and doing that remodeling of saving the kitchen and the bathroom, but tearing the rest out and then petitioning to go ahead and have it be an event center? And if I were to do that and you turned me down, first thing I'd do was I'd hire a lawyer. Why was this one approved and that one wasn't? So I'd just like you to consider some of these things. I, I'm sorry that I cannot support it. You guys are wonderful people. They're doing a great job taking care of their yard, but I have to consider the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Dick Hazenour. I live on 2112 Anna Avenue. I live two houses away from this venue. It is a very nice structure. The parking will be the biggest problem I can see. All the houses on Anna are small homes, small lots. We have one-car garages or we don't have any garages. And we have to park on the streets a lot. And it's going to be very upsetting if I can't park there because there's no place to park when I come home. So I'm opposed to this for the simple reason, parking is going to be a problem. And 11 o'clock, you know, I'm 75 years old. I haven't seen 11 o'clock in a long time. The traffic is bad on that road, but it does quit about 8:30 when the store closes. But to go from 8:30 to 11 o'clock, and I know there won't be as much traffic, but it's going to be noisy people. Our family, it's a large family, and we use a lot of venues, you know, out by the lake and 304 venue downtown. And they have venue, 304 venue don't have a lot of parking. But you go out by the lake, they have a lot of parking. But there's days, it's not enough. It is not enough. I mean, it's, if this building was somewhere besides in this small housing residential area, it would be great, but it's just, just too crowded, too congested. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a little issue to handle exactly at 6:30 because we have an advertised hearing on the budget. So sir, if you go ahead and speak and then we'll probably-
Thank you, Greg.
Yep, that's fine. You've got about five minutes, so go ahead.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Boden Egley. I am a small business owner here in town. I have a family of six. We have gone through two graduations and several birthday parties, and we have a few more to go. When we reserve places to hold these functions, it is about a year or two out, just like the pastor said. And it's a problem with us. And I think that needs to be considered as well. This town is growing and we all know it's growing. We have a future in this town that looks like it's going to be pretty big. We need more places like this, so anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. We'll fit in one more. Thank you for being brief there, Mr. Egley.
My name is Jim Falcon. I'm at 2215 Anna. I'm directly across the street from the venue. I totally, totally support this and I ask that you approve it. So my son just had a baby shower. Him and his girlfriend are going to have a baby. No place to have it. So they rented Memorial Park, 100 degrees outside and a lot of people there, 30 people, 40 people, and heat. Nope, because there's no place to have a baby shower but two or three places. And like they say, they're booked out. Not everybody plans for a baby. So we need the venue. Standages are good people. They've maintained the property very well. I live directly across it. And I see neighbors using their parking lot. They don't have an issue using the parking lot to go flip around with a trailer because there's, they can't back out of a driveway or whatever, but we need it. And it's not going to be party haven. It's going to be baby showers, 50th anniversaries, 25th anniversaries, graduation parties. So it's not going to be an all-out party haven. So we definitely need this place and I live, I own the property right across the street and I'm 100% behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lucas.
Yep. In no way, shape, or form do I want anyone to perceive that we want to not hear what you have to say. With the technical issue of the budget hearing that's been noticed, I'm going to make a motion a minute, but I'm very hopeful that everybody that planned to testify will stay and be patient, just like we all are through the public process and consider your testimony. And so with that, I move that we recess this public hearing for the purpose of having our scheduled budget hearing.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by Garrick to recess. Just to add something, folks, this little hearing we have here usually does not take more than 10 minutes unless somebody gets really talkative. So we shouldn't have to wait too long, but it is a legal requirement that we pause at 6:30 and do this because we advertise it in order to be compliance with the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska. So that's the logic behind doing this. Mr. Rieker.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. If we pause it, and I agree with you, Ty, do we have to then, we can't vote on it if we're going to be listening to additional testimony after we get done with the budget? So how do we handle that?
I'm sorry, we're just, what we're going to do is recess this meeting and then we will reconvene this meeting once we have concluded the budget hearing. So basically, we're having one meeting, pausing it, having a different meeting, and then starting this one over again or continuing. Okay. Everybody clear on that? Okay. Counsel, please vote on the motion to recess. Okay, this meeting is recessed. We will have about a three-minute break and we will convene the public hearing promptly at 6:30. You may talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, you don't-
Can I spread that in?
Thank you.
Insurance.
I'm talking to the, to the obstacle.
Uh huh. Yeah.
We can't, yes.
It's like July 6th.
He's been right here.
Which means-
Needed drinks.
I don't see where you're going with that.
Good idea.
No, I'm with you. I was just excited.
You know, it's, you know, it's a lot of-
Yeah.
It's like, it doesn't stop, it didn't happen.
I know, that's what I-
And then you're stripping the businesses in the middle.
It's because it's cool.
We're trying to grow, all of us, there's no housing either. Like we bought our house, they were only making three houses for sale at all of North Platt.
I don't think the question is in character.
I don't think the question is in character.
Well.
It's got the benefit of the problem.
I know, that's what I said.
And then you're stripping the premises in the middle.
We're trying to grow all of this. Like we even bought our house. They were only making three houses for sale at all of North Platt.
You know, you gotta do something too.
Maybe we can.
It's like I had some long, long stuff to do.
I got up there and I'm like, well, you're doing great.
I, 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 I.
That's why I messed up.
Or with COVID.
I'm gonna be thirsty.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Yeah, that's all it is, from the hearing. Some of the things.
I think there's been some mention about.
All right, everyone, we need to reconvene our next meeting, please. Welcome back to the City Hall here at the, the agenda for the special North Platt City Council meeting here on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. We're calling that meeting officially to order. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Here.
Trial.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. No formal vote or action will be taken at this meeting. There will be a public hearing on ordinance number 4143 to adopt the budget statement and to appropriate city monies for fiscal year 2023 and through 2024. Lane, do you want to read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4143, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill to appropriate some for necessary expenses and liabilities, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you. Dawn, it's all you. I would just like to acknowledge the record attendance we have here at this year's budget. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor Kelleher, members of the city council, Mr. Grosseth, and all of the members of the public here this evening, we are holding tonight's budget hearings separately from any regularly scheduled meeting in compliance with LB 148 passed by the Nebraska Legislature in 2020. We have three copies of the city's 2324 budget available for the public, and we are providing this presentation outlining key provisions of the proposed budget. Key provisions of the 2324 budget include increasing the general fund cash reserve, proposing a salary schedule that incorporates a cost of living adjustment of 3.5% effective October 1st, 2023, and the addition of an industrial wastewater treatment plant fund. For item number one, a general fund cash reserve of $11,685,305 is reflected in the budget. This amount reflects approximately 32.9% of the budgeted general fund expenditures of The auditors have previously recommended the establishment of a general fund cash reserve, and thanks to the direction of the city council administration and the continued diligence of all city departments to control expenditures, we are pleased to present a budget which includes a cash reserve that represents approximately 3.9 months of general fund operating expenditures. Auditors have recommended four months for the city, so we will continue to work to increase the cash reserve through future budget processes. The second key provision is that this budget proposes a salary schedule that has been adjusted to provide a 3.5% cost of living adjustment, which would be effective October 1st for all city employees. And the third key budget provision is the addition of a new fund for the industrial wastewater treatment plant, which is provided on page 103 of the proposed budget. As construction plans are refined in the upcoming year, we expect to provide a budget containing additional detail and formatted in the same manner as the utility fund budgets currently are. This slide presents a graphical representation of the budgeted revenues for the general fund in the total amount of $38,650,28. This is less than the 2023 budget total of $42,38,550 by approximately $4 million. The reason for the decrease is because of the reduction of beginning cash balance reflected in the general fund revenues. Last year, the entire cash reserve of $8.76 million was reflected in the general fund budgeted revenues compared to only $3 million this year, and so the difference is approximately 5.77 million. An additional $9,140,334 reserved cash balance is not reflected in the 2324 general fund budgeted revenues. The pie chart illustrates the proportion of the total that each of the various revenue categories comprise. Sales tax, as you see, makes up 10.1 million or 26.5% of the general fund revenues. A summary containing both 2023 and 2024 budgeted revenues can be found on page 16 of the budget. Slide four provides a breakdown of the 2024 budgeted general fund expenditures totaling $35,520,57 by general fund department. This amount exceeds 2023's budgeted expenditures of $34,617,492 by $902,565. This slide illustrates that the budgets of the three largest city departments, being police, fire, and public service, make up three-fourths, or 75.4% of the general fund. A summary containing both the 2023 and 2024 budgeted expenditures can be found on page 22 of the budget document. This slide compares the city's total 2324 budget with that of the 2223 budget by fund type. The total expenditures shown in the darkened line reflect an increase of $72,76,818, or 40.68% from 2023 to 2024's budget. Most of this increase is in the utilities and other funds categories. The increase is partly because of increased capital costs in the utilities funds and the addition of the industrial wastewater treatment plant fund and the recreation infrastructure and bond fund in the other funds category. Slide six compares the city's proposed mill levy with the current 2223 levy. The total levy being proposed reflects a decrease of 3.77 cents per $100 of valuation. In addition to the city's levy decreasing, the city's total tax asking is also decreasing by $57,538. This slide provides the city's mill levy being, being proposed for 2324 of 40.1316 cents per $100 of valuation compared to the levies of the previous 10 years. In reviewing levies back to 2004 and 2005, the levy being proposed for 2324 is the lowest. The budget that has been published and presented reflects an additional 1% increase to the city's restricted funds authority above the 2.5% annual base limitation increase. As a reminder, this is a limitation of the amount of revenues classified as restricted funds that can be budgeted. It is not a limitation on spending or expenditures. A list of the major revenues that are considered restricted funds are listed on the right-hand side of this slide. We have included an item on the September 7th Special City Council meeting requesting council's approval of the additional 1% increase in the city's allowable growth, which requires 75% approval by city council. The last two years, city council approved the additional 1%, which we believe is especially important, given the economic development activity and continued potential for increased restricted fund revenues. Thank you for your time and attention this evening and for all of your efforts and interest relative to the city's budget process and any questions that we might be able to answer at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Hold on, don't run away. I'm sure there'll be a question or two. I just want to say real quick that Dawn Lane and all the city department directors spent a great deal of time working on this budget, and it's pretty exciting that we're actually able to lower our levy as well as our annual tax ask. It's hard to say that word quickly, those two words quickly, so thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. That being said, council, do you have any questions? We'll obviously be considering this otherwise on Thursday, and this is a public hearing. So, any questions right out of the gate? Brad, go ahead.
Not a question, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to chime in on your comments of gratitude. One of the tenants that I came on board to the council with was to reduce taxes. That's been one of my mantras, and it's encouraging to see that this is actually happening. Not only we're reducing the mill levy, but we're reducing the amount of dollars, so when I go down to the courthouse to pay my taxes, I don't have to write a bigger check.
So, Dawn, the, there's a significant increase in the budget from last year, but that's because of the wastewater treatment plant, the new one, and that isn't included in our, our cap that we have on the state, correct? That's outside of that?
That is correct.
Good, okay.
Yes.
Just, just wanted to clarify for my own.
I would clarify, Brad, the other thing is the rec center bond issue is included in there as well.
Yes.
So, bonds don't fall under those. Gotcha.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so since we have a great audience, does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Is there, Judy, is there anybody in the meeting room down there that might want to make a comment or a question? Yeah. Okay. We'll give them a second to get up here just in case. Anybody coming down that hall, Craig? Nope. Okay. Counsel, we need a motion to continue.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing and a second motion by Rieker, second by Garrick. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Okay. We're good? Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, KJ. Okay. If anything else to consider at this meeting, this meeting, the special meeting of the North Platt City Council is now adjourned. Mr. Lucas, if you'd be willing to reverse your motion and put us back in order.
Yeah, I would move that we come out of recess and reconvene our prior meeting.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by Garrick, to reconvene the prior meeting or public hearing, as the case may be. Calling the question on reconvening the prior meeting as well as the public hearing. Motion is passed. Okay, we're back. We've had 14 folks make comments thus far. Who would like to be next? We have someone right here.
My name is Bill Thrash, 2104 Anna. I'd like you to disregard that last gentleman's statement when he was talking positive about it. He doesn't live here, he lives in Maxwell, Nebraska. So, maybe I overspoke by calling him a gentleman, too. I don't know. As you can see, he's not here because we confronted him already and he left. So, I just want you to know that he, he owns the property, but he doesn't live there. And the only thing I can say is, everything that's been said out here about this property, this venue, I would just be saying it in a different way or repeating myself of what I've heard everybody else say. They're pretty much spot on. But if you want to see a lot of traffic, go, go down on Anna and, and just, just check it out. There's semis that go up and down that road with, from, from Westfield, and there's a lot of speeding. And I've called the cops, and I know they're busy, and it takes them way out of their, their way because they can't focus on downtown areas as much. But I've called them, they come out several days later, and they hang around for a little while, and then they leave. So, I, I've called them about three times, and then I quit calling them. I've lived there since 91. I bought that place as a residence, and I want to keep it as a residence. I don't think it's fair for somebody to just come in and want to change it, and it affects everybody that lives in that area. And I'd just as soon finish out my time there if I could without having a business on, on the other end of me, because we, we have Westfield to contend with, and Westfield, for as big as it is, it's pretty good, pretty good. Don't have any real complaints or anything, but, you know, it's not unusual to hear milk trucks and bread trucks slamming their crates and everything around at 6 o'clock in the morning, but that's something that I bought into when I bought the place, it was already there. But I don't, I don't, I never had a problem with the church at all. It was quiet. But you can't tell me that there's not going to be booze there. You can say it, but it's not going to work that way. I know, I've been around, and so that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Come on back up, sir.
You know how I am. But anyhow, I was going to ask you a question. Are they going to tear the barricades out of the alley so that people can drive through the alleys now? Is that what they're planning on doing? They got posts all down through the, on the property. Are they going to tear them out so people can drive out of there and go down the alleys? Is that what they're planning on?
I, I just kind of wonder. Because I want to say.
So, I'll tell you what, sir. Go ahead, make any comment, and then I'll ask Scott and Willin to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, because I drive that alley down that alley about every day, because I live down there, and I go down and take my car parts, and then I get them, because I know there's gas pumps, gas meters all the way down that alley. And if you come out of there, I have to watch it when I drive down there, because they're not, you know, that alley is not that wide. And if anybody comes out of there at nighttime, they could hit one of them meter, gas meters easy, you know, for the gas companies. They'd be pretty easy to hit. But anyhow, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Who's going to be responsible for that?
And you're Mr. Martinez, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
I didn't bring a water in with me. Okay, so, Kim Christensen, I'm sorry, I address you mayor, thank you for listening and council people, and I've talked to most of you already. I live at 2116 Anna, right next door to where this venue would be. The definition of a venue is a place to party. And I think a lot of us neighbors, we don't have anything against the standages, but we were not even notified that this was for sale. There was no for sale sign out there, it's just kind of been slid under the table a bit, and we didn't even know about the rezoning until we got certified letters, which really wasn't fair, and we did not have a plan of what they were going to do. My concern is, I've got grandkids, and there's kids in the neighborhood that play, ride bikes on a quiet residential street. If you rezone it to commercial, I fear not only for the safety of my grandkids, but visiting kids as well as my own safety. The police force is kind of spread out thin enough, they're not going to be able to monitor the area. We've got Cody School close by. My next door neighbor who is, because of her health, is not here. She's had firsthand experience of what actually goes on at rented venues from years of being on the fare board, and all the bad stuff happens in the parking lot. And arrests are not made inside of a venue. Things just happen in parking lots, on, on streets. Westfield is an attraction. We've got Bible supplies, we've got a nice grocery store, we've got, I mean, that is not a problem. And, yeah, we have a little bit more traffic, but it's all good people going to good businesses. I did visit with neighbors, there was only one that was against, I mean, for it, I should say. Main concern was the building would go to waste. Well, the building's not going to go to waste. It's a nice building. There are other options to do with the building. It was actually God's building. He's got a plan for it, and I don't think this is the right plan for it. Churches are allowed in residential areas because they obviously attract different crowds than venues. Setting a residence that will continually threaten North Platt's peaceful residential areas by putting venues or businesses in residential areas is not good. This rezoning would turn it into something it was never meant to be. And I'm 17 feet away from that building, or parking area where, where I watch TV in the evenings. I don't want my peace disrupted. Good intentions, which I'm sure they have, lead to unforeseen consequences if this is rezoned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? You're going to have to move faster, Gary.
Sorry.
No, no, I was talking to him, sorry.
Speed walk next time.
No, go ahead. Take your time.
I'm Lisa Barky, I live at 1905 Cedarbury, and I just wanted to come and stand in support of the, the standages. They're, they're good people with good intentions. I think it would be a phenomenal opportunity to have a small venue in town, so you don't have to drive out of town to all of these bigger venues. It'd be nice to have a bridal shower or a baby shower in a nice facility as opposed to these sterile walled standing buildings that they rent out for hordes of people. I don't think that every venue is going to have drunk and disorderly people, because there are good people that go to Westfield, but there are also good people that go to parties, so.
Thank you. We have a lady standing over here, so I'm going to let her talk before, since you have a chair.
Well, she looked, you look different in person. All right. My name's Bailey Mason, I'm 1501 West First Street. So, I am a mom, I am a teacher, I agree, noise and shenanigans when you've got little ones around is not ideal. Also, living near the high school, I'm always getting vehicles parked outside my house, and my husband's solution to that is to put his own stuff there, but, you know. But we've got kids poor driving, speeding, that's not just special to this area. It's all over town. But these concerns from your neighbors are good, because now we know we have people watching out for the standages during these events, helping keep an eye on these events. And all of these events were possible when it was a church to begin with, so if things weren't crazy then, we're really hoping they aren't now. Standages will work to take care of these concerns that the neighbors would have. I've never known Scott to be lazy, unkind, and considerate in any way. He is a stand-up guy, like everyone else has said. Also, this will take a little bit of time to get ready for any of these events, I would assume. They've got good taste, so it's going to look super awesome by the time they're ready to go. So, this will give the community some time to understand the expectations the standages would have for this, and for them to make those clear and to get to know the neighbors a little bit better, build some rapport. So, they've got time for that to happen. When it comes to traffic complaints, that's a totally different area. If there are already pre-existing conditions, then that is something that needs taking care of, not tonight. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Gary, move fast.
Gary Pearson, president of the North Platt Area Chamber of Development Corporation, mayor, city council members. Just want to, the chamber certainly does not have any official position on that. In fact, we haven't even discussed it. I just want to validate the fact that we do get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of people stop by looking for a place to do some simple venues, and it, and it's difficult for them. And I know the Visit Bureau, Visitors Bureau, same, same situation. The public hearing process, I, that's what the neighborhood's all about. You know, I don't want to weigh in on the neighborhood, because I, you know, I certainly don't live in that area. But I do want to point out a couple of the things. We've had four, at least four, very large commercial structures in the community, one on the north side, one on the south side, one downtown, one in the middle of town, all purchased by churches that were one time pretty big business operations. All were taken off the tax rolls. All of them hold a lot of venues with a lot of traffic. If this project doesn't go forward, just always be cognizant of the fact that it is a church, a congregation could purchase it and run it as a church, but also do the same type of venues, just as they've done in the past. So, I just wanted to point that out. It's kind of nice to see someone in reverse, somebody taking a property that's not on the tax rolls and willing to put it into a private business sector situation, obviously knowing they, they need to work very diligently with, with the neighborhood, so just wanted to make those points.
Thank you. I didn't even have to say next, that time.
Next. Yes, here I am. My name is Cindy Huntsman, and I don't live in the area, but I do live in the heart of North Platte. And you've opened up several different venues, 304 is one of them, I live right down the street from 304, I live down the street from the KC Hall, I've lived down the street from St. Pat's Catholic Church, and I'm going to tell you, the traffic is the least of your problems. We don't see a lot of traffic from those, the bricks have a lot of different music venues going on, as does Allen Hirschfeldt at 304. I have not seen an increase in traffic because of those venues, and I don't see a lot of drunken people driving down the street. So I think what standages are trying to do with that venue is a good idea, and I would totally support it, even in my own neighborhood. So, I just had to come up and say that it doesn't increase the traffic, I don't think, and I don't live in your neighborhood, so, I'm sorry, I just haven't seen that happen in my neighborhood, and I live in the ghetto, so, thank you.
Do we have anything else? That might be hard to follow. Okay, here we go. Hold on just a second, sir. Those of you that are standing in the hallway, there are three chairs in here that are unoccupied, if you're so inclined. They like standing. Okay, sir, please continue.
I'm Ken Hosmer, I live at 2302 Anna, which is west of the property. I just wanted to add a few things to the concerns. First off, just to make everybody aware, this property is not next to Westfield, it's mid-block, so even though there's another church, and lots of activity over by Westfield, this is surrounded totally by houses, this venue. The other thing is, the parking estimate of 60 cars, I think is a bit over-optimistic. And I base this on the fact that my lot is 132 feet deep, I did some math on this, so their lot is the same depth, and they designated 16 parking lots along the east fence, and if you do the math on that, they've estimated eight-foot-wide parking spots, the standard, I believe, is nine foot. So in other words, I'm saying, in a dirt parking lot, dirt and gravel parking lot, there's going to be lots and lots of people probably parking on the street, because we're, I mean, it's human nature, you look, and cars get put haphazardly in there, and you say, well, I'm going to park on the street. So I just wanted to add that in, maybe reassess the number of cars that could park in that parking lot, I think they were overly optimistic. The other concern is, we moved to our house in 1999, we planned to stay there, as most of the folks that have spoken have. And nothing against the standages, but I believe they got this property for a very good price. And if it's rezoned for business, I'm assuming it would be worth considerably more. And so, if the property is sold to someone else, then there's any number of things that it could be used for, as businesses, et cetera, which, again, totally negates the small neighborhood atmosphere of our street, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Craig Smith, 1409 West D. I just want to say, this town definitely needs another public venue like this, I just want to offer my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, we've got a race going on here. Oh, no, I guess not, go ahead, sir, okay.
Hi, I'm Chase Dodson, 2311 West A Street, I want to thank you all for serving the community in this role. I guess I just ask that you consider, if this was in your backyard, if you would like it, I heard a gentleman speak earlier, that said, you know, he thought it would be welcomed. Well, when you buy a house in an area, I've lived there for 13 years, when you buy a house in an area, you don't anticipate a church becoming an event center, so. And it is different than just a church, where your typical churches aren't going to have functions where alcohol is allowed, and how that might change things, so, I would just ask that you really take some deep thought on this, and ask that you do not consider this this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Calvin Peterson, and I live at 818 Crane Court. I used to live at 2909 Anna, but I'm familiar with taking the shortcut, and getting to Westfield, and all of that, but I can remember back in the day as a kid, when Westfield, it was almost no houses, no nothing, and it's just like you were living, you know, kind of out in the country almost. But without progress, there is no town, and without a town, then it doesn't survive. So, with sustainable beef, and everybody that's coming in, all the new apartments that are going up on Lakeview, and the storage facilities, our traffic is going to expand. I don't care where you live in the city, you're going to deal with more traffic. And as far as the venue, I'm in support of it, my mom was 84 years this year, we tried to have a family reunion for her, and, and of course, that was the first weekend of June, when we had the monsoon, and 68 degrees for a high. So we were going to have it at the RV park, where my brother had his RV, but, of course, being rainy and cold, and old people, just doesn't work, so we ended up just having to have it at our house, but I am in favor of this. And I understand, I'm getting old myself, and I don't like change, but if you don't change, progress will move on without you, and you'll eventually enter the kingdom, and somebody else will, a 20-year-old can move into their house next door, and say, hey, we're having the Husker party, or we're having the volleyball party, and their quiet neighborhood that they now have, from their older friends, will change in one transaction. So, I'm in favor of it.
Excuse me, I'm back up here again. I've been listening to this, and it's very interesting, but I kind of think we're missing the point. We're not here to talk about, we need more convention centers, and more venues, and things like that. Yes, we do, we need them, but that's not what we're voting on, whether or not we want another one, we're voting on, is this the correct thing to put in a residential area? Yes, I know, I don't think anybody here is going to argue that we don't need more venues, but we need to argue about the safety, the residential area. We've got some hotels coming in, that are going to be having more meeting rooms at them. Maybe we need to be looking at a convention center, where we can have plenty venues at it. It's not that we need more of these, we know that, but we're looking at, is this the correct plan? We're missing the issue. I don't think any of us are here to say, oh, we've got enough of them. No, we're here to say, is this the correct location for it?
Anyone else?
Council members, Mr. Mayor, I'm Bob Lindemeyer, and I live at 219 North Bryan. I come here in support of the standages idea here, I think it's a great idea, I think it's something we need in this community. I would point out that, even though some of you may know me as an attorney, I have a little side business called Flat Rock Love, and I do weddings on the side, and I've had to do weddings on the 18th hole of the golf course, in 100-degree weather, and it's not fun. I've had to do them out at the, out at Lake Maloney, under trees, it's not fun. We need to have a venue where we can do small groups, and small gatherings, and I can't think of two more responsible people than Scott and Melinda Standage, that would be in charge of this. And you're talking about some people that not only care about this city, Scott works for the city, he loves this city, and you're talking about people who want to improve this city, and letting this old church sit off the tax rolls isn't going to do anybody any good. You can talk about all the alternatives, and all of that, but I'm here to tell you, a wise man told me long ago, perfect is the enemy of good. Yeah, this ain't perfect, but it's good, and I ask that you support it.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'd like to, me again, I'd like to, thank you guys for considering this, you know, good turnout for this, but I'd like you guys to consider something. We have business districts for business, okay? We have neighborhoods for families, you know, we should be bringing more people, more families, into North Platte. We have somewhere on 26 venues in town, we have plenty, we could probably even use some more, but I feel like that you need to consider, it's not the right place for a venue, it's in the middle of a neighborhood, it's really quiet. Me and my wife are the new kids on the block, okay? We've only been there, going on a year. And part of the appeal is, it's quiet, a good place to raise my son, and the traffic is a concern, and you know kids don't pay attention, no matter how much you harp at them, love both ways, across the street, more traffic possibilities, can put my kid in, you know, a little bit more danger than I would like, just as life. But I'd like you to consider that, you know, we need to keep our neighborhoods a neighborhood, and it's important to me that we think that way. Business is in business. Keep neighborhoods a neighborhood, and I think you'll get good results of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Paul Ottinger, 804 Cedarbury Road. There was a time when I believe I was standing in this spot, asking for rezoning, and there was a fair number of neighbors that were asking that rezoning not to occur, I hope that time has suggested that it was a good plan, and that there haven't been the issues that people said there would be. I think this is kind of a similar situation. I think where I'm from, there's a pub on every neighborhood corner, which is where they belong, so you can walk to the pub, instead of having to drive. This is not a pub, this is a place where families can gather. I think that there'll be less nighttime events than we're imagining, a lot of baby showers and things like that happen during the day. I've driven to this location, it's a really nice spot for a family gathering, and I think you should consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Bill Reeves, 2710 Anna. Let's put a little realism into this, I love venues, and you don't want me in your neighborhood. You rezon it, you lose control of it.
Other comments?
Um, sorry, there was one little note that I had, that I forgot to mention. Kim Christensen again?
Could you get in front of the microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay. My neighbor noted that Louis Carlini, and I don't know if I have his name exactly right, or Carlini, had wanted to purchase this property, and he was told it could not turn into a venue, so he did not purchase it, but he was going to buy it before the standages buy it. And he was not told it was not going to be able to be a venue. So I'm wondering why it's okay for them, when it wasn't okay for him, also, just a side note. And I think he was going to try to be here at the meeting, but he's probably not, obviously he hasn't come forward, but. He did say I couldn't mention his name.
Thank you. If you have other comments?
Wes Meyer, 2016 Anna. I just had a question on the conditional use of the property. If he does decide to change that to something else, can he do that without coming back to the council? And if he decides to sell that to someone, can they then change that to whatever they want it to be? I guess that's a question for the attorney.
I did just note this is a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay, standages, we have one standing question here, other than the one that was just floated, regarding the barricades in the alley, would you like to address that? You're not obligated to.
Mayor, Council, Scott Standich, 8010 Trail. I will address that, we have no reason or idea that we'll ever take the barricades out. We don't want alley access, so people will pull right straight across our property into the alley, because we already have some issues with people going into the parking lot, and spinning their tires and stuff, and that would just make it even worse, so we're, no intentions ever taking those barricades out.
Okay, thank you.
And if any other questions, just shoot them at me.
Still in the public hearing, so we reserve the right to call you back. Okay? Judy, are you out there? I just want to make sure that, as I read this, we are not looking at a conditional use permit, is that correct?
That is correct. What you're looking at is a rezoning, but it's a little bit different than just a typical rezoning. It has a P in front of it, which means it's a planned development. With a planned development, what they're required to do is submit a plan of what they're going to do with that property. That plan has to remain as approved, if you approve it, you're approving the plan to go along with that rezoning, and it has to remain that way. If they would decide to sell it, for example, the next owner could use it the same way that they're doing it right now, under that approved plan, if they decided they wanted to turn it into a Starbucks, they would have to come back and amend that plan, and you would go through the same process that you're doing right now. It would go to Planning Commission, it would come back to City Council, because it has that P in front of the B1, it's not a strict B1, it is a planned development.
Thank you. Okay, we've been at this now for an hour, plus a little break for a separate meeting. Does anyone have anything to add that has not already been said? We would be happy to hear you if you have. Anyone in the meeting room, in the back of the City Hall, that would like to add anything? We don't see Judy run all that much, so it'll be interesting to see. She's pretty quick when she needs to be. Okay, last chance, anyone? We would need a motion, Council.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker, to close the public hearing, calling the question and closing the public hearing. Thank everyone that took the time to testify, we appreciate you being here. Okay, Council will now consider item number 13, adopt the recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission for an amendment to the North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011, future land use map, amending certain lands from public slash quasi-public to commercial on property located 2118, 2208, 2210, and 2212 Anna Avenue, as indicated on the attached map. Before we have any motions, I just want to remind the Council that if we do not pass this one, there is no point in considering number 14. Okay. Okay.
I move to adopt the recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission for an amendment to the North Platte Comprehensive Plan 2011, Future Land Use Map, amending certain lands from public, quasi-public to commercial, located at 2118, 2208, 2210, and 2212 Anna Avenue, as indicated on the attached map.
Motion by Volz, second by Lucas. Discussion. Donna beat ya, so go ahead, Donna.
I just want to thank everybody who came to the meeting tonight. I wished every city council meeting had this many people interested in city government. There's a couple of things I had heard and I referred them to, well, I took a picture of our, our ward representatives, the mayor and everything, and I sent it to people. And I don't know if they sent emails or sent a text to anybody that pertaining to this situation or not.
I had a few phone calls, yes.
Did you? Okay, okay. I just want to, I'm really happy to see everybody here. I guess is what I want to say. I, I received several, fourteen actually, I think I counted, phone calls. And they were pretty much the same as what I heard tonight. And I, and I do really believe that the Standages had, have good intentions and, and I appreciate their efforts. We did also have a visit. I feel like I need to flip a coin on this, but I guess I won't, but that's all I want to say. The fly in here too.
I know, I've been trying to kill him this whole meeting. The fly, that is, just so we're clear. Mr. Lucas, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I would just reiterate what Donna said. This is a very difficult one and I just wanted to share with the Council the view I'm looking at on it. I think what's difficult about this is if you think of what a church is allowed to do in R2, there's a lot of similarities what, to what the Standages have on the table. And I think there's some differences, too. I guess what I'm struggling with is that, you know, a PB1 is a, really a design for kind of larger, commercial, mixed-use developments with maybe some potential residential aspects in them. But I appreciate, I think the, the reason that, that Judy and the applicants have proposed it that way is it does keep the city's finger in what's going on if there was a change of usage. So I appreciate their recommendation. I'm just not sure how, how it fits. And so I will tell you, I spent an enormous amount of time trying, rereading R2 zoning and what the conditional uses are in R2 zoning. I'm sure a lot of the, you guys did as well. And frankly, I think we have a little bit of a hole for this kind of specific situation. If, if they were gonna operate in a way, under a conditional use permit under R2, which I believe is the way the Rock Church is operating today, and, and we had comfort with restricted hours and occupancy and all those types of things, I think I could probably get there on a conditional use permit. To me, it's, it's just difficult to have this wide open of a zoning. I, I trust the Standages, the applicant tremendously with running a, a good, proper business, but zoning goes with a lot and that kind of lasts forever unless you change it. And I think that, to me, is what made, makes this particular decision so, so difficult.
Ty hit the nail on the head, but I even think before we rezone, you have to look at how we're trying to change the land use map. And it, it almost looks like a little target in there where you're going to put a commercial in the middle of a residential district. I know it's an end to a means to get it to a PB1, but changing the land use map in a totally residential area to a commercial, that's, that's where I get a little agita on this deal. On the other hand, this public hearing was one of the most professional I've heard. Scott and Linda are stand-up people. They are. And everyone came here with your A-game on who spoke, so this is how public process works. We listen. I'm making my decision at this time. So, but the land use map is, is where I'm having concern with my vote on this, so thank you.
Mr. Nestle?
Mayor Keller. I think people's homes, for the most part, is the, probably their biggest financial investment that they make. And to me, I'm like joined with Ty and Pete, it's right in the middle of a residential area. And to me, there has to be a compelling need to change that from resident to something else. This is a wonderful plan, but I, I have a problem going with the commercial on this. We have to protect people's homes and that's, you know, Leicester Castle. And so I, I, I have to, I have grave reservations about this.
Anyone else? Mr. Flanders?
I appreciate everybody showed up tonight. It shows that North Platte is a vibrant community. I would be concerned if nobody did show up. You know? I mean, there's support on both levels here. But I, I too, I, I have a concern of making that a commercial property. So, but again, I want to thank everybody for, for being here.
So I grew up in this area. My grandmother lived at 2220 Anna for years and years, so I was one of the little kids, you know, on my bike, tooling around in this exact neighborhood. So I know, I know the area intimately and my heart is, is definitely there. I have a little one and I cannot even imagine having my little guy run around in the same neighborhood when you have semis and the, the normal traffic. And then you throw another venue in there that has a, a hundred-person capacity possibly coming in and out of there. I mean, it just, residential neighborhoods are meant to be residential. And I think I have a real concern with the traffic. The Standages are amazing people, not a single person had anything bad to say about them. But if they sell that property tomorrow, that next person may not be as such standard, stand-up people. So nothing against them, but that's, that's where my heart's at.
Mr. Woods?
I've always been a proponent for, for business, especially small business. I love small business owners. I've had many small businesses myself. And I've swayed back and forth on this, listening to both sides. But, and I think the Standages would make a, a great success of this business, everything I've heard. And I've talked with Scott once or twice. I don't know you, but, but you know, I've gotten a good impression from what everybody says. And I'm sure you would make a big success of this. We are short of venues, so I think it would be full and busy all the time, which is the problem, because I have the same concerns about putting a commercial zoning in this residential area. That's just the way I feel.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Reeker?
Feel obligated. I don't have anything to say. I mean, I, I-
Make a record of this.
I knew I shouldn't have said that. And, and I, I appreciate the good, the kind comments that are made of Standages. I have no reason to believe that they're not true. I don't know you personally. My, my biggest concern honestly is after you're finished with it, then what happens? And I don't think it's a good practice to have commercial, commercial endeavors in, in residential neighborhoods, so that's my thoughts.
Anyone else have any comments? Calling the question on number thirteen. Number thirteen fails. Number fourteen is therefore pulled from the agenda because it's moot. Number fifteen, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick, to approve the claims. Calling the question on approving the claims. Claims are approved. We now have the public agenda request. We respect all our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired to public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Indivisible violation will be declared out of order. If anyone would like to request that this council consider an agenda item in the future, please come up to the microphone, tell us who you are and make that request. I think this is the most people we've ever had in the audience when I ask this question.
Gary White.
Oh, hi, Donna. Hold on, go ahead, sir.
Kevin Casara, 203 West First. And I guess the only thing I have come up here to say is I am happy with the way that the council has voted on the zoning issue and I am very disappointed for Scott and his wife.
Thank you. We do need to keep this to agenda requests, though, so it would not appear that we have one at this point. Okay, one more, oh, I'm sorry, did you have one, Rita?
I did.
Okay.
Public, public speaking, what did you say? Now I, everybody was talking, so-
Public agenda request.
Okay, yes, I would like to have a request of, on the cemetery.
Okay, what is your request?
Because I'm, I'm wanting to pay to get in. No.
We have a department for that.
Well, everybody's paying to get in, you know.
Okay, yes. Would you move over a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yeah, and I just kind of showed you, told you not to, or whatever. Yeah, on the, the city cemetery. Can I speak about that or is it?
Well, if you have an agenda request, you're welcome to say something. If you just want to speak generally, then I would just ask you to submit a letter, because we don't have anything on the agenda for general comments.
Okay, so I'll submit my letter.
Thank you very much.
I forgot how this works.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And it has changed, so.
Okay, we'll get a copy of it from you before you leave, okay?
All right, well, I'm gonna give it to you if that's fine.
That's fine?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'll make copies and distribute them to everybody. We appreciate your preparation. Okay. One quick thing to mention, as you are aware, we have the 150th celebration of North Platte's birthday on September 13th, which is a week from tomorrow, in Cody Park, between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. We'll be serving hot dogs, chips, and water or pop for a mere dollar and fifty cents, continuing the 150 theme. So it'll be a very inexpensive way to feed the family. We'll also have free rides and various other activities going on in Cody Park for anyone who'd like to attend. So please tell your friends and your family, we hope that you'll come out. Council, we'll send out a little volunteer sheet, but I would appreciate if you would consider coming between that five and seven hour and we'll all stand there and hand out pop, hot dogs, and water and to the, to the, to the public. I think that'd be a good way to show our appreciation for everyone in the community. So if you're able to make it, please come. If you're otherwise engaged, I understand, probably not everyone can be there, but it would be great if you could make it, so. Even if you can only be there for thirty minutes, that'd be great. Okay, Mr. Reeker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Volz, to adjourn, calling the question on adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, appreciate you being here.
Congratulations, everybody voted yes. Your turn to come with, Mr. Mayor.